Hey, what's going on, folks? We have a great show for you today and a special guest, quite frankly, joining to weigh in on some topics. The first one is Chris Christie says he's running for president. Trump's calling him sloppy, saying he has a big mouth. It seems like they're fighting. But when Christie and Trump ran against each other the first time and said these things, Trump ended up paying off his debt and Chris Christie ended up influencing Trump to pick Christopher Ray at FBI director.
So you know who recommended him to me? Chris Christie, okay? He recommended him and that's okay. I don't mind that. I've taken Chris Christie's recommendations before.
So I'm going to ask the question, why should I believe that they're actually fighting? When it seems a lot more like fake politics and WWE? Then we're going to talk about a Muslim led coalition that rallied outside the Montgomery County Maryland School Board against some of the LGBT agenda. Apparently the removal of an opt out option from human sexuality related material. Holy intersectionality, Batman. This is going to send the left for a loop. And that video is from Ford Fisher. Make sure you check him out. He does great independent journalism. And then we're going to weigh in on the new Apple goggles. For over $3,000, you can put goggles on your face and interact with a computer like you never have before. As much as people are making fun of this and rightfully so, is it really that crazy? I mean, we sit on a little rectangle jamming our fingers against a small cell phone. How long were humans going to do that? The next logical step, I'm not saying it's good, but it is these goggles where your hands and your arms are free and you can exercise better posture. We're going to weigh in on the pros and cons. And New York City, I see it's really smoky there. That sucks. Apparently there's some fires coming from Canada. Stay safe, my friends. That air looks like no joke. God bless you. Dream Rare Podcast starts now. What's going on everybody? Today I'm joined with, quite frankly, to go over like four or five stories. So thanks for being here, my friends.
Hey, I'm happy to be here. I'm just happy to be inside, to be honest.
Yeah.
See out the window is this orange pink glow that has enveloped everything.
So New York, New Jersey, the tri-state area, stay safe. That that smoke, we're going to talk about it at the end, looks like no joke. I guess there's some forest fires in Canada and it's like, what is it? Have you gone outside to breathe or no, are you staying inside?
I mean, I was out this morning and it's gotten progressively worse from just this morning. I went to, I went out with my, my wife and my daughter to go pick some stuff up from a, from a store. And from the time we got home and we started feeding the baby into the time I left for the studio to come do this with you. It went from yeah, hazy, that weird orange pink sun in the sky. And then when I left to come to hang out with you to go to the studio, I'm seeing just sheets of smoke. It's just, it's a filter of smoke now. It's actually like we have a barbecue somewhere in the next, uh, in the next neighborhood over. And it's, it's a, it's ridiculous, man. It really is, given the distance too.
Yeah, it's, I've had it happen once or twice in, in California. That looks really, really bad. And I've never heard of that happening in the New York area. So we'll talk about it at the end, but I know forests have existed for our entire lifetime. And I've never seen this happen in that area. So I'm very curious and we'll read some comments too of the, why you think that it's happening now or, or what they're even saying. Yeah. So the first story, we'll get into it. Chris Christie's running and I see a lot of people saying a lot of stuff. In my opinion, I'm guessing you agree where it goes like Mike Pence, Chris Christie, Nikki Haley. Like, I don't think they even have a chance. This is probably the last time I'm even going to mention them because I don't know if they're running for their donors or maybe they just want to get their face out there. But do you think any of these people are going to clear like 3% of the vote?
No, no, no. In fact, I made a, I made a joke this morning that I really think that Chris Christie is, it just wants to, to, to do something for a few months. Because maybe on the campaign trail, the catering is really good or it's just, I, I don't, I don't see anything. I don't understand why 11 people, I don't understand the party, uh, the, this party mentality. Because obviously primaries, when you have people that are, especially somebody like a Donald Trump, that's already out there and established to have a primary situation is really not good for anything. Everybody says, oh, competition is healthy. It's not, and it's a, it's, it's just very weird. It's a weird thing. I don't have faith in, really, I don't have a faith in a lot of things, especially when it comes into the election. I don't have faith in the actual system that we're able to, we're supposedly able to go in there and tap into to make the election work. So that, that almost like negates any kind of candidate analysis for me at many points along the way. But when you have Donald Trump that is over three, polling three times higher than his, the second place person behind him. It's just like, I, I don't know why everybody else is doing it. I guess you want to be able to, Tim Scott or somebody wanting to be able to reestablish their brand for years down the road. I understand that, but it is, it is an odd situation. And Chris Christie, man, talk about.
Yeah, I disagree on, I like that there's a primary. I think competition is important and personally we'll talk about it, but I don't think Trump, I don't think he's better than he's ever been. I think he's kind of worse, weaker and faker than he's ever been. So like this idea that everyone should get out of the way for him. I don't see that, but with Christie, Tim Scott, like I don't even think they're going to clear 3% of the votes. So I, you know, there's other people running. I know Dr. Shiva said he's running. I think RFK has a better chance of beating Biden. I don't, I don't think that's a good chance, but better than a lot of these other Republicans. But you know, agree to disagree there. You don't think there should be any competition for Trump? Everyone should just kind of like.
It's not even about competition for Trump. It's just, uh, you know, I was talking to even Rich, Rich Barris about it. And he's just saying statistically, everybody's saying that these things, if you have an incumbent, it doesn't help the party at all. It doesn't help, it doesn't help a group of people at all to actually, uh, I don't know, do anything going forward. It actually creates a lot of infighting, a lot of different camps, a lot of irrational things are going on. I don't think on Trump's end, I think that there's a lot of misplaced, misplaced resources into attacking DeSantis. Especially when you have such a big lead. Now my thing is with somebody like Trump out there polling the way he is, I'm really just thinking that somebody's being set up to have the nomination fall into their lap. If he, if Trump is successfully law fared off of the campaign trail. Because whether you like him as a person, as a candidate, anything like that or not, or if you're completely indifferent to it all, which is what I'm starting to become. The one thing you can see is that every day there is a very big concerted effort to just drag this man off of the campaign trail and end his political career forever. And I, I just feel like the bottom feeders that are many, many points underneath him, who have no statistical chance of overtaking him are really just setting themselves up to hopefully catch something in their hands if he is dragged off the campaign trail in some unnatural way.
Before I play this clip, cause I have a little presentation of, I believe personally that Chris Christie and Trump are actually like friends and business partners, pretending to fight. With that being said, it's interesting because the arrest of Alvin Bragg, or you know, when Trump had to fly to New York City and get arrested or indicted or whatever, you know, didn't seem like it really did much. The polls really swung in his favor. So it seems to me like it was neck and neck. And I personally think that DeSantis is going to close the gap over the next year, that they were very close. And that arrest kind of drove people back into Trump's arms where it's this balance of like, that helped him raise a lot of money. That helped him kind of gain the victim narrative again, where people believe, well, if they're going after him, he must be good. But at the same time, it's one of those scales where like you said, if it gets to the point where they successfully take them out of the race, as somebody that's not planning to even vote for him now, I would hate that. I want him to win or lose fairly and squarely, not having loser DAs that can't even clean their city. You know, take them out of a race. So I kind of see it as a curse and a blessing. As long as he doesn't get taken out of the race, I think that kind of narrative plays in his favor. Kind of painting him as the, you know, the persec, the persecuted.
Yeah, I get you.
I'll play this clip real quick of Chris Christie and Trump. Cause obviously I'm not a huge fan of Chris Christie, to say the least. He seems like a nice guy, I guess, but I'm not like blown away by his authenticity. So here's my presentation without saying much. I want to get your direct reaction. You know, this says more than I could really say now, so here it is.
So you know who recommended him to me? Chris Christie, okay? He recommended him and that's okay. I don't mind that. I've taken Chris Christie's recommendations before.
Why I think Chris Christie and Donald Trump are actually friends who work together and it's all just a WWE show presentation. When they were running against each other, Chris Christie said Donald Trump was unfit to be the president and Trump called Christie a weak little boy who had taken part in a criminal scheme. From this roll call article, Trump and Chris Christie, who says you can't buy friends? Trump's fundraisers pay off Christie's campaign debt, Bridgegate legal fees. Hmm. After they both bashed each other and Chris Christie endorsed Donald Trump for president, Trump bragged about signing a big fat check for Chris Christie. You know, Chris paid off his entire campaign debt tonight, right? His entire debt, Trump told the crowd. And then years later, after Trump called him a weak little boy, Trump took his recommendation for FBI director.
So you know who recommended him to me? Chris Christie, okay? He recommended him and that's okay. I don't mind that. I've taken Chris Christie's recommendations before.
But now Trump's on the campaign trail again, saying Chris Christie has a big mouth. He's sloppy. The same thing he did in 2016 before Chris Christie later influenced one of his biggest decisions as president.
So you know who recommended him to me? Chris Christie, okay? He recommended him and that's okay. I don't mind that. I've taken Chris Christie's recommendations before.
It's starting to seem super fake to me. I don't know if Trump voters and Trump supporters are voting for Chris Christie to choose the FBI director for Donald Trump, but I would guess no one wants that. So yeah, so real quick, that's really my take is, uh, you know, I watched him make fun of Chris Christie on the campaign trail. And then three or four years later, he admits that Chris Christie influenced his decision for FBI director. So it's like, how much, how, how much of a weak little boy could he really be if, if he's influencing your decisions? Like the big decision that everyone hates and doesn't like.
Well, I, the first question I would have is in this scenario, what is the edge gained by anybody? Uh, I think that Chris Christie would have more to gain than Trump would because he's, he's, I mean, he, Christie has beclown himself on his own, outside of this entire, this entire thing, his relationship with Trump in a way where I don't, I don't know. Like I said, he's, his whole candidacy is confounding to me. But as far as that all goes, we saw so many things like that. Donald Trump in 2016, pretty much putting the boot on certain people's throats, going after Rand Paul, destroying Mitt Romney. And then of course, you know, people like Christie fighting with. And then when it came to decision time and when it came to president-elect Trump, we start seeing those dinners, the pictures of the dinners pop up with Mitt Romney and Donald Trump sitting down in opulent restaurants. Mitt Romney looking like a, a beaten little schoolboy. So I don't know if some of it is just about competition and loving to just rub people's noses and things and then bringing them back up and saying, here, come, come kiss the ring or whatever the hell it is. But taking, taking an FBI, uh, an FBI appointment seriously from anybody is a very big showing of trust. And I would have actually pulled Christopher Ray's nomination or anything, once the votes start. I would have fired him the second that I saw that 93 people voted for him to confirm him. Because out of a Senate, in the way that it was set up back there in his first term, the way that the Senate was configured for him to get 93 votes, I knew it was a terrible day for this country. And here we are, all these years later, he still has a job. He's one of the only people remaining from the Trump administration, if you want to call it that. And, um, and it was, it was a bad, bad suggestion, but a suggestion taken. So I don't know, there's been so many theories about who's playing Kabuki theater over what? A lot of people thought that the, that the, the, the kind of butting of heads between Trump and Jeff Sessions was all Kabuki theater. But in reality, in behind the scenes, it was not. It was a, it was a very tumultuous relationship, right up until the point that he was let go. So I guess the jury's out and I'm just playing observer on this one.
Yeah, nothing wrong with it. I guess some of the stuff you brought up with, he was like bashing Rand Paul. I think it was funny, but Rand Paul's probably one of the better senators. You know, you said that he was like crushing Romney on the campaign. This is exactly what I'm, as a voter, I'm like, why should I believe that this isn't WWE? When you're bashing Romney in 2016, but then you, he not only ate dinner with him in 2018, he endorsed him. You could look that up. Trump endorsed Mitt Romney. I never for a day in my life thought Mitt Romney was a good person, not when I was 12, not now. So you know, he bashes Mitt Romney, endorses Mitt Romney. He bashes Chris Christie. He hires his FBI director from Chris Christie. Like you were saying with all the votes for it, he admits in that Hannity interview from this year that basically the Democrats and Chris Christie really liked Christopher Ray. So Trump thought that that was like a good thing because like Chris Christie and Democrats liked him. Like this is the thought process of Donald Trump. So that's where I'm like, you calling him like fat and a little boy is comedically hilarious, in my opinion. Maybe it's not the most mature thing, but maybe I'm not the most mature guy. What can I say? But it's like, who cares if you bash them in 2016 and then employ them, work for them, endorse them and let them basically run your cabinet? Like, why should I believe anything Trump says? Another thing is too, he's, he put out a video that kind of sounds like RFK now talking about going after Big Pharma. It's like, it sounds good, but you, you definitely didn't do that when you were in office. You hired a pharmacy lobbyist executive Alex Azar to run HHS and Scott Gottlieb to run FDA. Like Trump did not pick outsiders. He picked the biggest Pharma shill. So I just don't believe anything the guy says anymore. It's like he's, I think he's like a circus clown who just like puts on like a show for conservatives. Like I'm fighting Chris Christie, but I just hire people because he tells me to. It's like, I don't know, I'm kind of over it.
Well, I think there's people that, I think you find quite a few people who feel that way as well. I'm not there totally. I just feel like at this point, I'm so disillusioned with the, our former republic in general. Presidential elections, if I, I look at them and I usually just look at them through traditional American scope, they should be some of the most meaningless elections that we have in our, in our country. But of course, the presidency has gone imperial back in the turn of the 18th into the 19th century. And we are, we're, we're just sitting here and, and talking about a mutant zombie body that, that has been imbued with way too much authority that was, it was never intended to have. So when I look at this, where we are right now, I'm always talking about, all right, if we're going to crash into the sea, I want to create a little bit of wind resistance on the way down. And that's why I really would love to see a lot more people doing some fantastic things, running a sheriff, running as governor, running just for state assemblies and things like that. With Donald Trump, the one thing that I'm going for with this is I, I would love, I, in 2016, I voted for him for a couple of reasons. I knew he was going to wage war with the media and cause a lot of discontent there. And he has been the major, the major reason for the media's integrity, whatever was left of it, being totally gutted. I loved that whole, that, that thing, that, that really, he created a lightning rod scenario that I think did a lot of good in that respect. I also wanted somebody that's just to be a monkey wrench in the gears. And in many respects, that happened as well. Some good things happened, some not so good things happened. But again, I'm not looking for any kind of lasting rehabilitation of Washington DC. That's never going to happen. It's dead. I mean, I'm looking for somebody to inspire some, it's some thought, some people to go out and do things where they live. And I think that the, that the four years of Donald Trump, where we were at least able to have some superficial moments of patriotism again, saying things that we weren't supposed to say, that we were being told was not good anymore, that we, we weren't exceptional, that we couldn't be exceptional again. Those are things that go a long way for people in their hearts and their minds. And if that plays out in real tangible ways in localities, that's amazing. So I was looking for that. And of course, if we can get a couple of good judicial picks, that was I was looking for. Now, now this time, if he's the nominee, if I'm going to vote at all, I'll vote for him. If not, if he's not the nominee, I'm not voting at all, probably ever again for president. Because like I said before, statistically, I really do not believe that the, anyway, the only way he does not have that nomination is if he was law fared off the campaign trail. And if they are able to go that far as to deny him a nomination, regardless of whether or not he's running a good campaign, has good ideas or bad. If statistically, as you said before, you don't want to vote for him. But if he was disallowed from winning that nomination fairly, then that would not be something you'd be for. That would be the final, the final piece of evidence to me that there is really nothing left to even go out there and engage in the system, at least on that level anymore, that you.
Fair. Yeah, real quick, before I, I say something, I would say, if that happens, I understand your, your point. If this is a hypothetical scenario, only time will tell. If, you know, he ends up just kind of pushing people away, DeSantis runs a good campaign and gets more votes than Trump, without him getting kicked out, would you still not vote for him over Biden? Or where are you with that?
Well, wait, okay.
Say Trump doesn't get taken off the ballot. Like if he gets taken off and you're like, I don't care anymore, they, they just cheated him out. But what if he runs, they both run fair and square and just DeSantis gains more support? Would you vote for him versus Biden?
I, oh, versus Biden. I don't, you know, when I, when I see, when I see the kind of people, when I see that after mid, the midterms, the first thing after the midterms that they all did was say that after all that misallocated resources into weak candidates, some of them, very few of them were endorsed by Donald Trump. But after a mediocre midterm, that should have been so much bigger, to see all of the Paul Ryan types, the Mitch McConnell types, stand up and already have this, this thing laid out. We didn't perform very well because of Donald Trump and he's never going to be the nominee for the party. And then suddenly we start seeing all the money that they control, the people that they work with. They're, they're starting to circle around DeSantis. And it seems to me that this has always been a, a plan, a transitional plan in some way. So to see that, you know, you're damned if you do, damned if you don't. I would rather go with somebody who makes these people upset, even in a small way, than go with somebody that they have, they have enthusiasm and some kind of a enhanced admiration for in, in, in DeSantis. And again, I think I would just be out because.
So you wouldn't vote for DeSantis over Biden?
I don't think I would vote period. I think it'd just be over.
So this is why, like, I feel like Trump is a character that's destroying things now. It's like, you won't even vote for DeSantis over Biden, but you're talking about the midterms. Trump picked a liberal Dr. Oz who ran a terrible campaign, who's not even conservative. He hired pharmacy lobbyists. He listened to Chris Ray. He hired a bad FBI director. 95% of his cabinet was swamp. He endorsed Mitch, uh, Mitch McConnell and Mitt Romney. Like in your head, Trump is like this guy who's not totally different. But even when I could prove he does a hundred of the same things that you won't vote for DeSantis for, like you give him a pass. Like Trump kind of, in my opinion, has people like under a spell where it's like, I'm not even going to vote for the candidate if it's not him. But it's like, on what planet is he this like miraculous, great hiring outsider who doesn't do the same stuff? He does 99% of the same stuff DeSantis does, like on what, like in what world is he so special? I don't get it.
It's, it's honestly, I think it's a little bit more base for me. I don't, I'm not looking at him as a miraculous guy. I have, I've actually taken a lot of shit criticizing, criticizing his, his policies and his ideas. I mean, for example, uh, town hall, you know, listening to his mental hall. I, I was up on all those great highlights of him getting those zingers and whatnot. But when you start talking about everything, I don't know, even his, uh, his states, the states of the union addresses. 99% of everything he says should be done is just something that is not the, in the purview of the presidency or the, even the Congress at large. It's more so a fact that I just see, I guess I have less faith. Well, thing that I did in 2016 where I thought that we kept, we caught lightning in a bottle. And I do try to give him some kind of benefit of the doubt for the fact that it wasn't just Chris Christie whispering in his ear. It was a whole bunch of people and how much control did he ever really have? I think that.
Why wouldn't you vote, you'd vote for Trump versus Biden, but you'd sit out if it was DeSantis versus Biden?
I think this, because I think the similar, like DeSantis, he had, I was actually rooting for this guy for a very long time. And the fact that he's willing to abandon Florida, which is literally the only thing that matters at this point. My problem, my, my situation is I'm focused on people who can do things on a state level. And I would, if Donald Trump has four years to, to, to throw, you know, stink bombs around DC and just cause problems, let him do that. Let, DeSantis should be the shining example of what really needs to be happening in this country to, to divorce ourselves from the irreparable, the irreparable situation in DC. And I thought that, I think that's kind of low for him to be willing to jump out of office two years early as, as it pertains to the constitutional limits in Florida. I just think, I don't know, to go out there when, when you can have a clear shot to do whatever you want in 2028. I just, I feel that that's kind of scummy and.
I mean, if like, for instance, DeSantis hired a surgeon general, Joseph Latipo, who was like a front doctor who was on the steps of Washington protesting lockdowns. That's who DeSantis put as surgeon general. He's fighting Big Pharma. Trump picked Jerome Adams, who thinks COVID has the tip of the iceberg, which was a Pence guy. He picked Alex Azar, a pharmacy executive, Scott Gottliebs. Trump's entire cabinet was laced with pharmacy lobbyists. Why should DeSantis get on his knees and be like, yeah, this is the guy? Like, why, why shouldn't Trump be challenged when he did such a terrible job and he shows no signs of self accountability? Like just because he talks about the media and he hires 99% terrible people and he shows no signs of changing? Like why, is it not okay for someone who hires better and is more pragmatic to be like, I think I could probably do a better job than this guy? Cause Trump is like, he, he talks a lot, you know? But when it comes to hiring, he doesn't have either good instinct or he just doesn't really care. Like his thought process on the FBI director was Chris Christie told me to, and the Democrats liked him. Like that's, that's not how you think. That's not how his base thinks. That's not how his voters think. But Trump has created this religion around him where people are like, I'm not voting if it's not him. You know, I see all these things, but like, that's okay. But when DeSantis does it, that's like too much. He should just stay there and not compete. There should be no primary, like on what planet should Trump go unchallenged in 2024? He printed more money than ever printed in 2020. He gave $18 billion in a socialist scam to Big Pharma. He runs around the country overselling it as a great human achievement. He refuses to, to turn on it like everyone else has. Like on what planet is it like, yeah, let's just give the keys to the castle, this guy with no competition. I don't, I don't see it.
Well, I, the other thing that I would, I would say is if you were not okay with the fact that with the situation where he would be forced off the campaign trail in some kind of an unnatural way, outside of being beaten in fair competition. I think a lot of people, and this is not really, this is a, one of those statistical things for me. But I don't believe he lost in 2020. I think it's kind of messed up that he didn't have, he didn't have a, a second term to do whatever. Whether it be to take the gloves off or just be more of the mixed bag of stuff from the, from the first, the first point, uh, the first term.
Does he have, does he have any accountability? Like, is he just a giant victim or the fact that he played into the lockdowns for a month? He funded all the Democrat states. He gave thumbs up to Newsom and Murphy. He allowed all this to happen. He gave them funding until November so they could do mass melon ballots. Like, does Trump ever bear any accountability for anything he ever does? Or in your head, is he like a professional victim where 2020 is just not his fault? He just screwed up from March till November, gave the Democrats everything they wanted, gave Big Pharma everything they wanted. Then they got you and now it's just not him. It's like Epstein disappears on his watch, but it's everyone else. You know, like, why, why, why does nobody say, like a quarterback who throws a few interceptions? Yeah, you lost the game. Yeah, there could have been a better decision, but also there's 20 times that you could have prevented and made this election more fair. If you would have gone the way of freedom and liberty instead of communism and Big Pharma money printing. You know, like, I don't see Trump as a victim of 2020. I think he dug his own grave and now has brainwashed people into crying as if he's not in on it. He's friends with Fauci, he's friends with Romney, he's friends with Chris Christie. But it's this big like Tom and Jerry show where it's like, I'm the victim, guys. They're persecuting me and if I don't win, you know, we're magadonians, follow me on truth, listen to me, think about what I think. And people are like, I only can vote for Trump, even though he doesn't ever do anything. You know, like what, how, I don't get it. Like you'll literally sit out, you'll let, you'll, you're willing to let Biden beat DeSantis and just be like, I don't care.
Well, if, if everything that you're saying is 100% true and there's no other, there's no other way of looking at Donald Trump's ability to, to do anything outside of what he was able to do in, in the first term, then there's, there's, doesn't matter anyway. Whether it's Biden, whether it's Trump, whether it's DeSantis, my, my thing here is, again, I have only, I'm only focused on what could possibly done on state and local levels to be able to find, to divest from this, I don't know, this, this unbreakable bond now that we have, this methadone drip, this addiction we have to Washington DC. That is the only way that there is a future in even certain regions of this country. Is if DC is distanced, that we have some distance from there. In that respect, I actually say, hey, well, if, if DeSantis is the better pick than Donald Trump, then DeSantis should be, and anybody else like that should be considering how they can go and make their states independent of the system and let Trump make a clown show of the whole damn thing. That's my whole point. I, I'm, I think that there's, I think that what you're, you're mistaking about me is that I have more emotion invested in this than I do. And, um, and it, that's just not the case. I, I'm, I'm looking at this from a restorative standpoint. Some people call it a great divorce, a national divorce, but really it's, I'm always thinking about, before we really hit the wall and we all go to shit, how the hell do we, how do we find a way to restore any semblance of what was a little bit more of a decentralized American republic? And I don't think that we're going to get that from anybody on that level of, uh, of that level of the government in, in, in DC. So, um, me.
Then why, then why would you vote for Trump if he ran against Biden, but you'd sit out DeSantis? If, if federal doesn't matter, why even vote for Trump then?
But like, cause, cause like you said, it could be a good time. That's, that's a, that's. That, that's, that's a, that's.
Why not vote for DeSantis then if he runs against uh Biden? That's not a good time?
Again, again, what we said in the beginning, what did we say in the beginning? If there was a way, if there's something that had gone on here where Ron DeSantis had closed a 45 point gap and there is a overtaking, there's something, I, I don't know, who knows what happens over the next year? But we were talking about me sit, I was sitting out if there is a, a situation where the whole thing implodes and the only reason why somebody caught the nomination is because Donald Trump is ushered off stage in handcuffs. That was the real basis of the, hey, the whole damn thing's done.
Yeah, but, but I said, if it doesn't happen, because you gotta remember before the Alvin Bragg thing, which in many ways I almost feel like is a narrative to just swing people in a direction, but you know, without that. Well, I'm just saying without that, they were neck and neck before that, that was the big swing. So this idea that it can't naturally swing back, it already was neck and neck like two months ago. It's gonna get closer. I mean, I don't know how close, but like I'm saying, if he doesn't get taken away in handcuffs, if he's totally fine and DeSantis wins fairly, will you vote for DeSantis over Trump? Cause you said no, and that, in that direction.
Yeah, well, yeah, cause as I started talking, I started thinking about the, the Florida thing. You're right. I um, my balance on this is really, I want to see DeSantis, I would want to have seen DeSantis staying in Florida for these last two years and concentrating on, on, on little, on the, the littler things that mean more in this country.
Right, but he's running for president and if he wins, will you?
And if he wins, I don't, I, I, I really don't know, man. I really, I will have to see what the, uh, we'll have to see what the, the jury is out on for this time next year. Because where, where are we gonna be at? What's, what's gonna happen? I don't know. Is there something, some kind of thing that, that the winds change in some way? I, I don't know. The whole thing stinks to me though, everything. The fact that there was a, there was just this, I, I don't know where the rift began. I don't know where the word got out that there was going to be this divorce between the coziness of Ron DeSantis and Donald Trump and who had recruited DeSantis to this um, to this, I don't know, this uh, this, this competition. Because he wasn't, he wouldn't have been able to make his brand in Florida without Donald Trump. And is it, you wanna talk about endorsements and how people have helped each other and uh, you know, strange bedfellows? But that was one thing that I just didn't get. Up until the midterms last year, people were like, hmm, you think DeSantis would be a VP pick? So it, it takes a, it, it starts, makes me wonder who is, who is um, who's greasing whose palms to get people to go after one another? Because whether or not you like Donald Trump, there are just as shitty people that would um, that we know inside the GOP that just didn't like Trump, Trump was, is at least outside enough to piss people off, to not want him to even to, to run at all. Outside enough, there's, there's gonna be something there that causes that kind of uh, agita. So in that respect, sometimes I can just see an undulation in the ranks is enough for me. Because especially since I, it, I've got less and less.
I got you. So that's a long, that's a long winded way of you saying you're not gonna vote for DeSantis over Biden if he wins.
Right now, I have got no interest in it. I don't think it's possible. I just don't think it's possible unless there is real chicanery that goes on. And if that's the case, then there's really, there's really even in just a nominal sense, there's nothing to even invest faith wise into this whole thing. Uh, a year and a half from now when we're, we're knocking on the door and uh, and it, and it seems like, I don't know, who knows? I always had the right to change my mind. It's, I, I, I was always excited about DeSantis before all this stuff, but now I just wonder what's really driving people. And as you say, there's a lot, there's a lot of things to be said about everybody on the trail right now, from Chris Christie to Trump. And um, and who knows?
Yeah, if, if Trump is the nominee, I'll vote for him because I think that his foreign policy is better than Biden. I think that his uh, judges will be better, even if he picks bad Supreme Court judges. The bad Supreme Court judges he picks are gonna be better than a Democrat Supreme Court judge. I think DeSantis will do the same. I mean, if you really look at it, Clarence Thomas and Samuel Alito, who are two of the best Supreme Court justices, they were chosen by George Bush. So even George Bush really picked better justices than Trump did. Trump didn't even pick like as good of people as Clarence Thomas, he's a legend. So like this idea that real quick, that you wouldn't vote for DeSantis, but you would vote for Trump. You're saying it stinks to the high heavens, but do, do you realize that like getting conditioned to not wanna vote for the Republican nominee unless it's that guy? Could be part of the chicanery, you know, in the sense of like, for me, when I started, when I, real quick, real quick, and then I, I'll let you go. When I started speaking about disagreeing with Trump, it took me a long time because I liked almost everything he said for years, was just based out of common sense and the truth was like, I'm doing all this research on Big Pharma. I know about the liability, I'm seeing who he hired, I don't agree with socialism. I'm seeing that Big Pharma is lobbying to get all this money from politics. And then Trump, all of a sudden goes from somebody who's like a skeptic of vaccines to somebody who's like doing business with them. So when I started making videos, people said to me the same thing you're saying about DeSantis. And I don't fully trust DeSantis for the record, he's a politician, but in general, people are like, why are you saying that? I'm like, well, what I'm saying is the truth. When Trump speaks the truth, I like Trump and I agree with Trump. When Trump lies, I don't just lie, I'm not a cultist, I'm not an idiot, I'm not a buffoon, I'm not a cheerleader, I'm not a bobblehead doll. I'm a news analyst, I tell the truth. I'm, so Trump spent the last two years falling off his high horse. He spent saying that the vaccine was one of the greatest human achievements in modern history. He's never admitted the lockdown was wrong. So this idea like, why shouldn't, like, it's like, how dare him challenge Trump? It's like, bro, everybody smells weakness in Trump. Yes, his base is brainwashed to like lick the dirt off his shoes and say it's chocolate, but normal people. And that gap is gonna keep growing or like, yeah, I voted for him once, I voted for him twice, I liked him, but he's fake now. He's faker, I don't even like RFK that much as far as trust him, but Trump's way faker than RFK now. Trump is like a phony, he's a shell of what he once was. So why should everybody say, I'm only gonna vote for him, but not anyone else? There should be no competition. Why? He, he spent the last two years lying on behalf of Big Pharma. Uh, I don't like, is that this, is that the Trump movement now? You lie when Trump lies?
No, 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 no. Um, I, I, I agree with you on the, the judges thing because that was one of the two reasons why I, I voted for, I voted for Trump in 2016. Judges, media war, and uh, I forgot what the other one was, but judges, that was, that was the big thing. I knew what was coming up there. Um, and I think that's uh, for the most part, I think most people would say that the abortion ruling alone would be par for the course because it was so big, how many lives were just saved with that? But on, on the foreign policy thing there too, that, that has become the other thing for me. Um, and I think you agree on that, you just said it, but there's, there's arguably less, there's, how many wars were tried to be expanded or started? I mean, hell, I, I, John Bolton had them saber rattling with Venezuela at one point. He resisted all those attempts to be baited into Iran. And then you have this other stuff that's going on, um, but then you have, then you have uh, DeSantis who makes sta- uh, statements about how uh, yeah, the, the war in Ukraine needs to be won, will be there to help the. So when, when I start hearing him pledge to the Ukraine war effort, which is a, a complete farce, I say, okay, well, uh, if I'm voting for anybody in that respect, if it came down to the two of them, then I would at least vote for peace. Now, whatever the hell, whatever the hell he's going to be doing or dropping the ball with, with uh, vaccines and pharmaceutical uh subsidies and, and bad picks. At, at this point, like I say, the only thing that matters in this country is local governing. So if, if there's at least somebody out there who has no uh, no interest in starting wars, that would be a great thing. I mean, that's, that's a big thing there. Uh, and, and I, I like that at town hall, he was, uh, Trump was uh, very hesitant in taking the bait with that Caitlin Collins about, yeah, but do you want Ukraine to win? He's just like, I want people to stop dying. Uh, I think that's a, a great thing there because we know where the, the winds are blowing as far as what Ukraine means to the uh, the, the shadow state here. And um, I, that, that's really what it comes down to. I, I, I like the foreign policy differences there, as long as we can just be with somebody that is going to be uh, uh, anti-war for four years, cause it really is just four years. And then it's just, what's the, what are we looking at? It's all local after that. It is, yeah, circus, I understand, it's a circus. And there's only very few things that I concentrate on judiciary, war and um, and, 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 I mean, on the Ukraine front, uh, DeSantis has not, he has not got my support on that one, and that's a biggie, that's a biggie right there.
I agree that Trump is good on foreign policy. I like his rhetoric around Ukraine. And uh, I think that's one of the things that is clear. He's willing to hang out with Kim Jong-un, as much as people hate that, I think it's kinda fire and uh, it's better to get along than to hate. I agree with you absolutely on foreign policy and that's totally makes sense to vote for him over DeSantis because you like his foreign policy better. But I wanna ask, cause with federal judges, you know, uh, DeSantis hired an outsider for surgeon general. He fired a Soros prosecutor. He has Thomas Massey endorsing him and Thomas Massey is, in my opinion, the best congressman. His voting record's the best, he's the realest libertarian, small government guy. Trump tried to kick him out of the party for disagreeing with the Kozak lockdown thing. Um, but this, like, that's a real libertarian that could possibly have a cabinet position. Um, obviously, DeSantis is gonna pick judges that are 20 times more conservative than Biden. You won't vote for, if Trump wins the nominee, I'm voting for Trump over Biden because strategically, it makes all the sense in the world. You're not gonna vote for DeSantis over, over Biden if DeSantis gets the nominee.
If he keeps talking about things like war with Ukraine, that's, I, I don't know, I, I, I want some kind of a firewall. So with, especially with certain things, like I was saying with, with Donald Trump, there's not much he can do uh, in certain instances, except be a, a monkey wrench in the gears. And one of those, aside from all of the, the weird machinations of seeing how certain people have now split apart from each other and now they're competing with each other and, and uh, it's just becoming a lot of big, ugly bout of infighting. I, I at least want somebody to hold it down on, on the, the, the uh, on the, the foreign, the foreign uh, whatchamacallit, the, any kind of foreign policy theater when it pertains to war.
You don't, you don't think uh, DeSantis cabinet's gonna be better than a Biden cabinet?
Sure, sure. I, I would say that there would, there would probably be something better there and, and uh, and then, and, and if that's the case, if he wins the nomination and he wins the presidency, then I guess we'll be all uh, better for it and in some way. I, there's, there's nothing, there's nothing controversial about saying anything like that. But as far as picks go uh, for, for judges, uh, again, again, the Supreme Court, we've been let down by some of the people that, that Trump has picked. Uh, Kavanaugh, uh, even, even Barrett has been terrible.
They're not good picks, yeah.
Gorsuch has, Gorsuch has done a lot more good than he has done bad. But you know, especially after the, the 2020 election, they did, that didn't work out for Trump as far as them sitting on their hands when it came to that, that Texas lawsuit, that was totally within their, their purview of trying to uh, figure out what was going on with some of these um, with some of these voting uh irregularities and stuff like that. So uh, when it even comes to the Supreme Court, I have divested a lot of hope in maintaining the court because it's really all about what are the states willing to do to nullify, to nullify? The Supreme Court doesn't make laws, it, it passes opinions and opinions could be ignored like anything else. And um, and, and we have a 10th amendment and that's exactly what, what's really going on there, which is why I put so much value on the governorship, which is why I was really, you know, kinda perturbed by how Ron DeSantis wouldn't close out his last couple of years really, really strong down there in Florida and then go run with the endorsement of probably everybody that he's making enemies with right now. But to your points earlier on, who really are friends? Who really is the enemies?
Do you agree that uh, like even though Amy Coney Barrett and Kavanaugh are kinda weak choices for conservative? Cause even on certain lockdown stuff, me, Robert Barnes, a few people noticed that she had ruled in favor of lockdowns before Trump picked her. So we were hoping he would go with someone that was actually like, you know, more constitutional. But um, do you agree that they're better than these Democrats? Like that they, they have a better voting record?
Uh, yeah, well, I would say if you're talking about Amy Coney Barrett and.
That they're better than the Democrats.
If, if, if it was Merrick Garland, Supreme Court Justice Merrick Garland, yes, yes.
Do you, do you agree that Clarence Thomas is better than like Amy Coney Barrett and Kavanaugh?
Yeah, yeah. And, and, and to your point, George W. Bush.
Yeah, George Bush picked Clarence Thomas and Trump picked one decent, good one, two, okay, better. But here's the thing strategically, I would rather have Amy, Amy Coney Barrett and Kavanaugh than the Democrats in there. That's, it's, it is big. If Democrats can get a huge majority in a Supreme Court, that's not good for the country. And the fact that George Bush, although the Bush family's corrupt, somehow picked a better Supreme Court justice than Trump. Like DeSantis hi- in my opinion, Trump is a good speaker, but he hires terribly. He just doesn't pick good people, his thought process of it seems a little weird, he doesn't seem like he executes. Like why, why not vote for DeSantis over Biden and let him roll the dice if he's the nominee? Like why not see who he hires? Maybe he hires a real FDA and, and HHS and puts some people in, in control of things. Like you're willing to just be like, nah, you know, if it's Biden, it's whatever at this point. Cause obviously like, it is what it is, but I'm voting for Trump if he's the nominee. I, I just can't believe that people that like Trump are gonna sit out and not vote for DeSantis if he wins. It feels very like, just interesting.
There's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of jaded, there's millions of jaded people out there right now that don't know what's real. They don't know what is authentic, they don't know when a loss is really a loss or a victory, a victory, whether it, it was made that way, one way or another. There's a lot of people right now who just think everything is a scam and that if things don't turn out their way for one reason or another, it's because something else, is something else made it that way and uh, and the world's against them. It's, a- and you know what? That's part of the psychological conditioning of, of living with media and government that we have for so many generations. You've seen so many things be blatantly uh, presented in one way when it's the total opposite that you, you start really uh, having a, a warped perception of what reality is. And um, and in that respect, uh, try, you, you have to, you have to make a little bit more, I guess, oh. You gotta make your decisions based on things that are, are, are very basic and principle. And I can see that, um, I think it'd be a lot easier for people to vote for DeSantis over Trump. If there was some kind of a way, we saw, like, especially if you know where you're getting your polling from, that there is a true shift that is going on. Donald Trump is dropping the ball, let's say he does go out there and do, do some campaigning or some uh, some debating, which doesn't seem like he's gonna do, doesn't seem like Biden is going to do it either. And in, and in many ways, I, I can understand why Trump wouldn't wanna do it cause it's just how many hoops of fire is gonna be thrown in front of his uh, thrown in front of him to jump through. But um, but yeah, I, I, I think that there is, if there is some way that, that um, DeSantis does make this swing all the way back, um, then there's gonna be a lot of people who will vote for him just because why the hell not? And um, and while we still have a country, then maybe that's just the, the thing that everybody should consider doing. But again, how do you, I would love to just see how it all is verified and cleaned out. What is going on inside the GOP? And, and if they're trying to force some kind of a bull moose situation where somebody, they want somebody like Donald Trump to go third party, then you know that is a real, that was a real, real uh, railroad job right there, if that ever happened. Hope it doesn't, but um, then again, you know, man, it's, it's all uh, it's a, it's a, it's a big pile of crap.
And I'm just, I'm just curious of it, but you don't have to make a decision like it's June 7th, we have a year. So you're right to be patient, wait it out. You're, what you say here as far as if you would or not, it's a hypothetical, so it's not, you know, there's not that much weight in it. I do wanna say one thing though, and just get your response, and then I do wanna get to a few other stories. But you know, you were saying that a lot of people feel scammed and like, you know, they, it's just like their way or the highway, like Trump or nothing. You know, that it's the truth, people are like, everyone else is scamming me, this is the guy that I believe in. And if it's not him, I really don't care anymore. Do you think that people like that should start to consider that he's possibly part of it? Because like the thing I showed you at the beginning, where it's like he's bashing Chris Christie on stage, right? He's calling him little boy, Chris Christie's calling him unfit, you know, Trump wins, he endorses him, that's politics, whatever. But then it shows that Trump bails out his debt and then it shows that Trump picks his FBI director because Chris Christie told him to. So like if Trump supporters are gonna be like, it's all a show, it's all a scam, it's Trump or nothing. Is it up to them to have the self-awareness to, to look and analyze the guy that they're in love with and be like, well, if I'm willing to say that, you know, DeSantis is sold out because Paul Ryan said something good about him, is Trump also sold out? Cause Trump has also said that we're all with you, Paul, you did a great job after Paul Ryan did two years of stonewalling him. Is Trump responsible for endorsing Mitt Romney? Is Trump responsible for hiring bad Goldman Sachs? So that's kinda my thing is like, yes, I agree that everyone's like, I'm disillusioned, we're scammed, et cetera. But at what point do people that worship Trump like, stop giving him the pass? Like they'll throw their hands in the air and say, I can't vote for DeSantis. Like they'll throw their hands in the air and say, I can't vote for DeSantis for this reason. But if you could point 20 times the corruption, the donors, the, you know, the neocon connection to them, then they just don't care. It's like how, I don't understand how, like where, where that's going to go.
There would definitely have to be a lot of, uh, self, there's had to be a lot of reflection on that, on that end. And, um, and I guess, you know, in 2016, I was voting in the primaries. Uh, cause I was, I was voting in the primaries for, I voted for Ted Cruz. When the, the New York primaries came around, I think in June or whatever the hell it was. Because at least on those debate, on the bait stage, he was the only one talking about the constitution. And everything else with Donald Trump was, you know, he, he knew how to work the media. He, he grew up in media and that was going on. So it wasn't really one of those things where I even considered. I didn't think that he would actually really get the nomination until he did. There were some, some of my friends who just knew from the beginning. And, um, and, but when it came time to vote, I, I, I threw one his way. And we were delightfully, we were delightfully surprised when so many people were crying when the day after he won. So in this, in this respect, um, um, I, I guess I, I guess I should, I guess I should, I will be probably taking that same approach. I, I think that when I was looking at the whole, when I look at the whole DeSantis thing right now, it's coming from a standpoint where I still, I don't have that belief. Like you, you're leaving your, your, uh, yourself open for there being a real legitimate, authentic way for the polls to go in, uh, in his favor. I think I'm just really just counting him out because of how big the swing. Like when I was talking to Rich Barris two, two weeks ago, I'm like, Rich, we're talking 40 points right now. Is there any precedent for that being overturned? He said, there's, there's none. It's just, it's impossible. So when I, when I look
That guy, I've seen him and like his polling work, he's so in the bag for Trump. It's like, I don't, you know, like he's just like Trump, 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 Trump. Where it's, I don't really care what he says, you know, it's like
Well, listen, you should pay attention to him because even though he has been a, uh, he, he, he's not really sycophantic about Trump in a policy standpoint or other, he's always just talking about what is resonating with people and what, and what kind of messages and what kind of things that are, are usually missed on the campaign trail and how to garner attention and how to garner people's, activate people to actually leave the house and go vote. So, uh, whether, I mean, I would still pay attention to Rich's work. I think he's the best out there. But I would say that from that standpoint of looking at the gargantuan distance between the two candidates. That is why I guess inside of me, when I, when I think of the idea of Donald Trump missing out on the nomination altogether in 2024, I assume that from now until then, there is going to be some kind of unnatural way that he has pulled off the campaign trail. And in that respect, I believe that there are people underneath him who have been placed there with the intention of, with some kind of foreknowledge that this is the game plan to try to pull him off of the, of the, uh, of the campaign trail. So that the nomination can just fall by almost default into their laps. So that's, I, that's where I'm coming from right now. Because other than that, if this wasn't all playing out before me, before us, the way it is and how it's been setting, getting set up and all these grand juries all over the place, the Mar-a-Lago thing, the, the, you know, New York, Georgia, all this. If this wasn't all getting set up, it would, it would be the same approach for me as any other year. 2016, I went in with, with Ted Cruz because I was hearing certain things there. And then when he was gone, okay, Donald Trump, it would be the same approach here. All right, I'm going to go in with a, uh, I think I'm leaning Donald Trump. And let's see after, after what, what happens and, and if he's, uh, if he's knocked off, then I'll, I'll throw it to anybody who isn't Biden. That would be the thing. I'm just a little bit jaded right now because I don't, I, I see the numbers and I look at the, the, the culture inside of DC. And I see lawfare being the precedent over actual representation at the polls.
Yeah. One last question, because I asked people, I was at a conference and anybody who went up and recognized me, I just asked them, I said, off record, you know, Trump or DeSantis, who do you like? Cause I wanted to get my own real life poll. It was about 50 50, Trump and DeSantis for the most part, but this was after the Alvin Bragg thing. And when it came to the DeSantis people, you know, they had their reasonings, why they liked him, et cetera, his governing. And with Trump, everybody said the same thing. They basically said, if he's getting persecuted, then that must mean that they hate him. If they're going after him in New York, that must mean he's the real deal. So I guess this is my question is, have you ever, have you ever thought that maybe that's their way of tricking people into just like running back into his arms without critical thinking or trying to hold him accountable for what he did when he was in office? Because really, when you're saying like the polls can't possibly come back, the thing is they weren't, they actually were neck and neck before the Alvin Bragg thing. That was the, I'm not going to say AstroTurf, but that was the event that led the polls to swing like 30% because everyone then was like, I guess I have to like him now. And that's why I like him, not because of this, but because of this. So have you ever considered that that was their way of tricking people back into his arms?
Oh, well, I'm the, a case can be made. A case could be made whenever there's a bump. Then again, he got a bump after the impeachments. They definitely wanted to remove him from office. They got, he got a bump after he got sick from COVID. I mean, he's just anti, it's one of those, he's one of those guys where, uh, from a public perception standpoint, he's just anti-fragile. You know,
And then real quick with the COVID, do you remember what he did right after COVID? Like he sold Regeneron, one of the Operation Warp Speed things. So he's like, you know, all the attention's on him. He has a huge bump and he sells a big pharma pill, you know, like I'm here.
The Regeneron was the antibodies. And that was, yeah, that was, that was the thing that actually worked, worked the best in that the, um, it was actually, it was not, uh, had nothing to do with, uh, the, the mRNA and all that stuff. And that was actually something that was, was, was helping people, um, get through that without having any kind of disastrous effects that the, the ventilation and everything was doing. And then that was just, that just went away, all that stuff. So that got squeezed out of the, the picture. But yeah, I remember the Regeneron thing. I, see, I would rather him say things like that. And, and as far as the, I mean, you don't have to, you're, you're preaching to the choir when it comes to the pushing of the, the vaccines as one of the, the biggest errors of his presidency and, and continues to the, this day. Every time that somebody asks him about, about it, even as being so, even being so blunt as to saying, you know, we, we're losing people. We've lost people in our communities because of these vaccines. And for him to, to continue to gloss over that and calling it a miracle. There's no excuse for it. And I caught a lot of shit for that, uh, as it was happening too. You could have been completely politically neutral about that. Fine. People are developing new things. If you want to go and check, test it out for yourself and then go right ahead. But I would have been, if, if that's how bad the politics were, where you could have been destroyed, uh, he didn't have to endorse it. He, at the very least, he could have been neutral about the whole damn thing. So, um, yeah.
The reason I ask this stuff too, is because I know you're chill. Um, you know, I told you before, and also in general, I know you're not a fake person. So you're going to say what you believe. This is healthy as far as like, I, I want to see where people are really at because you know, I do understand in polling, like the amount that DeSantis is down is not a good amount. Like you want to be as close as possible. Um, I think Trump kind of surprised a lot of people. He was polling very low at first and then he really rose the ranks. So I think anything is possible. But this is kind of my take with, you know, we saw, and this is going to be the next story with, uh, the left and the LGBT stuff. But in general, the left just kind of listens to themselves so much that they're completely out of touch with like 90% of people. Because in their echo chamber, they basically just sniff each other's butts. And they think like, everyone likes that stuff or like Muslims don't really like it, like average people don't really like it. When you go to Bleacher Report, it's a sports page and they post the propaganda. 95% of people disagree with it and these are not Republicans. So that's where I'm with Republicans. I'm like, these are such winning issues if you word it right. Cause the average person, if you don't make it political, they're on your side. Common sense kicks in. So I feel like the left kind of became that, right? And Hillary kind of ran this campaign of like, I'm the one, it's me, it's my time, it's my turn. That was her campaign. I see, not in policy, obviously, but I see a lot of that same stuff with the Trump movement. For example, that's kind of Trump's pitch is it's my turn, you have to be loyal. At the beginning, you even said that why even have a primary? Why even have competition? It's divisive, like just give it to Trump. It, it feels very Hillary-esque of like, it's his turn, just get out of the way, despite how bad he gets or how, you know, many mistakes he's made and that he hasn't learned. And then kind of moving forward from that, just this, uh, you know, I guess I'll let you kind of counter that, but you know, do you think, because when I hear stuff like, it's not possible, and if it's possible, it's this. I feel like people that, there's nothing wrong with voting for Trump or liking him, but they stay in so much of an echo chamber that it's like all they listen to is each other. Like, well, this guy said he has no chance. And if this doesn't happen, it's just us. It's like, maybe that's because people are so focused on following people that just agree with them all the time, that they haven't met the millions of people that are tired of Trump bashing Kayleigh McEnany or crying about Bill Barr on True Social. Like a lot of people, I know two-time Trump voters that loved Trump before anyone did, like, like primary Trump. They're voting for DeSantis. Like these people do exist. Do, do you feel like Trump's movement is becoming like a, it's mine, I'm entitled and we just listen to each other? So we feel like we, we must be as popular as we feel or?
Well, I, I, I think that, um, and again, I don't speak for the Trump guy because I don't really campaign for anybody. He just asked me my personal opinions and he barely comes up on, on my show in this respect. I mean, I'll, I listen to Nikki Haley and I'll listen to the clips that come out from the other, the other candidates from time to time. But you know, the other thing that you, you discount is that a lot more people, um, they don't look very deeply into things beyond how am I feeling in my pockets? How am I feeling in, when I sit down and, and balance my checkbook? Have people even do that anymore on my kitchen table? And put in food in the cupboards and all that stuff. And also when you start seeing, uh, time and time again, you, you see the evidence of how things like the impeachment ridiculousness, the hoax is there. The, the Russia investigation, pretty much all of 2020. Forget about that first, the first impeachment about Ukraine. I mean, now we start seeing exactly why, exactly why they had to tie him up in impeachment proceedings because of Ukraine. Because a look at how much was being hidden out there in that country. So I think that when you start seeing the, when you start seeing the truth about major issues that we were dragged through the mud and had our, our relationships strained and destroyed for three and a half plus years during one investigation that led into the next. And how these are all the superficial things that they were doing to just clog up that presidency that already had its own problems. I mean, you're talking about a presidency that was, that had a hard time being able to assess itself honestly, because it was constantly fighting off attack. And when average people are looking at this and they're taking into account their personal checkbooks and they're taking into account that so much of the things that the media said, we needed to be very, very upset about what Donald Trump was all BS. Then that is enough for people to saying to hell with this, I'm doubling down on them and let them have another four years. It's only four years. As far as DeSantis goes though, my whole thing with this again is I don't, I'm coming from a place where I just don't believe he is the 2004, if, if he's the 2004 Red Sox, then okay, I'll be a believer after he comes back from 3-0. But right now, I, I, I just really think that the, from what is on my radar screen, the only way he becomes a nominee is because Donald Trump has been grabbed by the scruff of his neck and dragged, dragged off the trail. And if that is the, if it, if the situation smacks of that, then I would rather just say, you know what? Go ahead, take it. The country is yours anyway. Cause again, just like, like Democrats should have been, Democrats, they've had evidence, hard evidence since 2016, that they have not chosen any of their nominees since 2016 at least. So, um, but still I, I, that is just a game that I would be less and less
So you just don't think it's possible that people could vote for DeSantis over Trump? I, I agree with you on Ukraine war. I mean, that's an important issue, but this is why, and you know, it's not just like people who like Trump. I think a lot of Republicans, you know, I'm trying to break up the echo chamber a little bit. Because I feel like people have gotten super intellectually lazy on a lot of pages I follow on Instagram and I see them posting. One thing you mentioned was like the pocketbook, you know, your wallet, how much money you have, inflation. These are issues that are hitting and I agree that I, I vote Republican. I think they're the lesser of two evils. But one of the biggest lies that I think 95% of Republicans believe is that only Democrats caused inflation. This idea that Trump's going to save you from the inflation that he actually caused is insane. He printed $6 trillion in 2020, he sent out UBI COVID checks and he was okay with lockdowns for a month and a half. So this idea that only Biden caused inflation is just a Republican party lie that they don't want to take accountability for all the communism, socialism and money printing he does. So I, you know, it's not to say that he's not better than Biden. I'll vote for Trump over Biden or DeSantis over Biden 10 times out of 10. But Republican echo chambers are so thick of like just pointing to the left or just regurgitating what Trump says. They don't even realize that Trump helped cause the inflation that they're experiencing today. So it's almost like Stockholm syndrome. He's going to fix what they did. He, he also did that. Like he's responsible.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. I mean, I was, I was, I was watching the, I was watching the, uh, the US debt clocks, uh, go through the roof in 2020. And, uh, and every other time that a spending bill that he said he wasn't going to sign was in fact signed and they got bigger and bigger and bigger. Um, I mean, that, that is just par for the course since, uh, since, since the early 20th century. My whole thing, uh, since we're talking personally, because A, number one, I, I'm not under the belief that there aren't Republican or non-progressive voters, because I'm not a Republican. Non-progressive voters who would, um, vote for the DeSantis over Trump. Obviously there is a lot of DeSantis support out there. That's legitimate. And, uh, and, and that's just the way it is. And until all this stuff was going on and I started seeing the, the, the soap opera drama that is being built up. I was really excited to see what he would do after his constitutional, his constitutional limits were hit in Florida. But, um, I, I, as far as the money goes, you know, the great reset was coming one way or another. I was interested to see whether it was going to be Donald Trump or whoever the hell else. I was interested to see what, who was going to be in control of the, the reset. Our dollar is gone. I mean, there's, there's, there's no way that we're going to ever, it's impossible to pay back the money with the interest. It's impossible. So there needs to be a transition into something new. And I was interested to see, uh, if there was going to be a soft landing or a hard landing with that. Whether we're going to have some sort of a, um, a reimagining of a gold-backed currency or if we are going to be thrown into what is obviously coming our way right now with the digital. But I just do want to, uh, to reiterate that, that I am, there's no way, shape or form, uh, am I denying that there aren't a lot of people who voted for Donald Trump who are now done with him and are really excited about, or at least interested in what DeSantis has to say. And most of them say, hey, it feels like we're getting Donald Trump without actually having Donald Trump. And I, I see things like that all the time. So, um, and, and that is really, sometimes that's as little, as far as it goes, you know? You say, um, uh, you seem, uh, at least in the things you've said in the last couple of minutes, seem to think that there are a lot more people on the DeSantis side of things that are, that are not as intellectually lazy as Trump. But I have heard the, the, the most common thing I've heard coming from DeSantis people is that they are getting Trump without Trump. And that is a pretty shallow standpoint as well.
There's a, there's a lot of losers on the DeSantis side. I mean, there's like professional, just like coattail riders, you know, where they, they fight with the people working for Trump's campaign. And they're both, they're both fake. They both can't tell the truth. Like I, you know, one of them that comes to mind is like Bill Mitchell. He was like the biggest Trump supporter. Now he's like the biggest DeSantis supporter, but he's like, Chris Christie is going to flamethrower Trump. It's like, no, he's not, you know what I'm saying? Like you could like DeSantis, but like, no, like there's some fakes on both sides for, for sure. And, uh, you know, I think RFK deserves like scrutiny, like every politician, but the fact that he's in the race. Now Trump is starting to push out pharma stuff because he realizes that people are starting to gravitate. So he's like, okay, I care about this too. You know, DeSantis banned central bank digital currencies when we're talking about the great reset, et cetera. In Florida, whether he's doing it for a campaign or whatever, he really did it. So, you know, I, I disagree friendly, if that's even a real dictionary word, that like no competition for Trump. I, I think competition is the best thing from both sides because, uh, you know, now I feel like it's forcing Trump's hand to, to not be so complacent and Hillary-esque of like, it's mine, I don't have to do anything. It's like, nah, bro, you do have to do stuff. And, and for the, for the general, for the general, he's going to have to do a lot more than the Republican primary. Cause that's a whole different ballgame to win a general than to win over the Republican party.
When I said that primaries are not a good thing and we should just hand, I didn't, I didn't mean we should just hand it over to Trump. I was saying that in situations like this, you know, people say that these are, when, when a, uh, when a, um, when a party has an, it's incumbent and you know, Donald Trump is like an incumbent. You have to, uh, you have to imagine that. But when they have a popular incumbent that has, that has all of this type of, um, these challenges that pop up, that statistically it, it isn't actually good for, it isn't actually good for any kind of voter turnout and all that stuff. I'm just saying that in this specific situation, I don't care about, competition is what breeds everything. Especially if you're going to have everybody in the same debate stage, which is never, never the, the fact either. There's always the B staged. And I remember in 2012, you had someone like, uh, you had people like Gary Johnson that were, uh, that were out there, even though he's, he's been long since a joke. And, uh, I was, you're seeing people, um, debate their, uh, primary candidates in, in the field from, I don't know, uh, Google hangouts and in a motel six. So I don't really think that it's a matter of competition being bad. I was just trying to make a, maybe a very badly worded point.
I get what you're saying, voter turnout. I get what you're saying. Voter turnout.
Well, turnout, it also creates a lot of ridiculous infighting. There is so much venom. There is so much venom that, 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 that's being spit right now that you, there's, it's very hard to have conversations because as you said, it's a big food fight. And, um, it doesn't seem, I don't know. It does. It doesn't seem very conducive to progress.
Someone said in the comments, competition only forces them to lie better. That's actually really funny. And with what you're saying too, you know, I tweeted one time, I said that if Trump and DeSantis made you act like a kindergartner, it's not Trump or DeSantis's fault. That kindergartner was always inside of you. So, you know, as much as I could blame the primary, it's like me and you disagree on some stuff, but it hasn't got like crazy, like negative, because it's more like, uh, I like iron sharpens iron. I want to be challenged. I'm glad that you don't agree with me on stuff because I want to see what, where my ideas and your ideas, how they kind of clash in a presentation, because I want to build up and, and really crush in this country. But like, some people are acting insane. And the question is like, you know, no matter what Trump says, and no matter what DeSantis says, you're an adult. I'm an adult. I'm responsible for my actions. So are you. It like, why are so many people acting this insane? Like I, to me, it's embarrassing to see how adults act in politics. I'm not that old and I feel like I'm like the sage Confucius compared to like these 60 year olds acting like five year olds. Like it's, it's insane.
Well, that's, uh, you're, I guess you're just head and shoulders above the rest there anomaly.
I'm not trying, I'm, I, I'm embarrassed. It's not like I'm so special. I'm, I'm embarrassed because I'm not the most mature person. If anyone's noticed. I like, sometimes people are like, why are you doing that? I'm like, I'm having fun. So I'm just embarrassed that people that should wear suits and stuff are acting like four-year-olds. Like do, do you think people have personal responsibility? Like just because Trump and DeSantis are fighting? Like, do you see some of the stuff on Twitter? It's getting real dicey out there. Like you said, it's getting ugly. Like whose fault is that though? How, why are people acting that way?
Because we're not, we live in a post-political world. I mean, this is really where I, where I excel. I mean, political analysis and I mean, I watch the news and I make fun of things and people on the news and, and that's, that's a, uh, a nice exercise on my show to just keep things light and airy. But as far as political analysis and, and political strategy and all that stuff, I can, I can, I couldn't give two shits and, and because the real thing here is that we are in, living in a post-political world. It's all sectarian. It's all very spiritual. And, um, and, and when, and also we're in a post-republic. We're in a post-American republic. And it's, uh, I, I guess I should say a post-republic America long since been. And, 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 and most of the things that we talk about really is moot because they shouldn't exist. And they only exist because, for example, a lot of the things that we do in government and a lot of things that we complain about and a lot of things that we want to see tweaked and adjusted shouldn't exist. A lot of our, our bureaucracies and agencies, 95% of the, the federal government, if not more, should not exist. So when we talk about, when we talk about things and who wants to do what, who wants to flush out people over here and get better people to staff the, uh, the agencies that shouldn't exist, we're talking about, um, we're like addicts. And, and, and the only reason why these things come into existence is because they are bad mistakes that we made in the past, that we've made a habit of keeping them around. So I, um, it's, it's very hard for me to keep, um, to keep my tally up with what Trump is doing and what DeSantis is doing with what one party says they want to do in the other. There's, there's, it's really hard to keep my tally up. That's why I, I really just like, I'm, I'm inspired by local, local thinking and local action and, uh, and keeping yourself, uh, in, in some way, shape or form distant from that one size fits all, uh, crusade. It's a, it's, it's religious militancy. And it's, it really, it takes, it takes the heart out of everything.
And I think nothing is more local than yourself. And I think in my opinion, a lot of people on the left and the right, they forget that aspect of it. They think acting like hyenas are insane makes them really special. But when you talk about localization, nothing's more local than you. How you act, how you think. So I think, uh, a lot of people could, um, you know, they don't have to tone down maybe their passion, but I think, you know, sometimes people lose a little track of it and they end up being the problem that they were originally trying to fight. I have a clip I want to play and speaking of culture stuff, this is a, I'm just going to read real quick while it's loading. It is a Muslim-led coalition outside of the Montgomery County School Board in Maryland against the removal of an opt-out option from human sexuality-related material. So I guess they didn't, they got rid of an opt-out and parents couldn't opt their kids out of like sexual stuff. So here's the Muslims. That clip's from Ford Fisher. Make sure you follow him. He's, uh, I'm just going to put it up on the screen because I like to give credit to indie journalists that crushed Ford Fisher, spelled like that. With that being said, this is like an intersectional explosion for the left because they think that everybody's like, if you're not white or you're not like a straight Christian man who they hate and pretend that they don't or whatever. They just think everyone's on their side, fighting the good fight. Little do they realize these Muslim countries, especially people that are like Islamic Islamic, they don't do the gay stuff. Africa doesn't do it. Most of the Hispanic world doesn't do it. It's actually not popular around the world. So what do you think about the Muslims taking a hard stand in Maryland and being like, yeah, not with our kids. Sorry.
Well, this is the, these are the choices that, that, um, that leftists Bolsheviks have had to make, uh, over the years. Well, who are we going to bring in? Who do we want to bring in, uh, either through refugee programs or through any other kind of quota? Who are we going to bring in to try to shift the demographics in our favor? To make inroads with them, to offer them things and privileges that we don't give anybody else. And, uh, and, and to hopefully bolster our numbers and our, in our representative bodies and all that stuff. And, um, and so there is a linking of arms that happens there. Only problem is as you go farther down the line, they're going to, that, that counts for anybody that's coming over the southern border too. We have a, a situation where the cultural aspects of the Bolshevik left is, is now, it, there's, it's a ticking time bomb. Ticking time bomb. First of all, as you said before, uh, these are not whipped, uh, white Christian males. You're talking about Christianity has been consumed. Every denomination has essentially been consumed by this mind virus. Islam has preserved itself. What you can say what you want about Islam. It could be for you, it's not for you. You don't care. But it has preserved itself and it is, uh, there's not going to be any headway here. There's not going to be any headway here. It's, um, it's, it's, I'm glad to see it. I really am glad to see it. Because I like when people state, take stands on true principled bases. And I also like, uh, when idiots who think that they could make the whole world, blend the whole world into a shitty smoothie that, that gets rid of real diversity and tries to make everybody in the same degenerate, uh, painted in the same degenerate color. It's not going to work. I love it. I love when a plan backfires for certain people.
I think in Saudi Arabia, they started the slippery slope. So I think they're going to last longer, but I think even they kind of like, but their cave is like this. Christian countries, the cave is huge. Yeah. I mean, I think this is something that Christians maybe don't realize or don't care. Or maybe like, it's just like too far gone in certain countries. But if you notice a, a lot of these things that Muslims do, not everything, but a lot of them are also Christian things that just Christians don't do anymore. Like they're, they'll be like, I can't believe that like they don't let people stay at hotels if they're not married. That's crazy. It's like, that used to be a Catholic rule also that, you know, I've talked to older couples that couldn't stay at hotels in Europe because they weren't married. You know, there was strict laws against these types of stuff and they wanted to preserve the family, et cetera. You might not agree with it, but Christians did at one point do this and the slippery slope has gone to the point where it just goes further, further, further. And one thing that's interesting about the Republican party that is why I always talk about them more. It's not because I like Democrats more. I see it as the Republican party's my team that's scoring on my own basket. It's more of a threat than the other team. Because I know the other team's scoring on my basket, but if my own people are scoring on my basket, I'm never going to be able to win. So Ted Cruz, you know, took a lot of backlash because Uganda is going the opposite of America, more like Muslim countries. And Uganda is starting to criminalize LGBT identification. They're having very strict laws for doing, like pushing it on children. And they're going very extreme. So Ted Cruz tweets out, you know, something about it's so bad what they're doing in Uganda. And a lot of people agreed, a lot of people disagreed. My thing is this, you're an American politician. He tweeted a, a year and a half after lockdowns that he wanted to take masks off of vaccinated people. So he was willing to take my liberty away in America. He can't control his own state. He can't control his own country. They're having all these problems with, you know, hormone surgeries that he cries about all the time. They, they, they can't do anything about it here. And then he wants to fight for anal sex and sodomy in Uganda more than he fights for COVID liberty in America. You know, if I'm not saying, people are like, oh, you're so hateful. I'm like, no, I want to deport Ted Cruz to Uganda. So he can be himself and go fight for sodomy in Uganda. Like that seems to be what he cares about more than America. He can't do anything here. So let's, let's ship him to Uganda. It's not, I, I just think it's very hypocritical of America where we can't keep our own country open. We can't secure our own border. We can't stop big pharma tyranny. Our commercials are disgusting. Both parties are compromised. We're, we're getting just crushed in the culture war for the last 10 years. And you want to tell Africa how to be like America? You know, I, I just find it like, at a certain point, let's lead by example and clean up our cities before Ted Cruz is like waving a rainbow flag in Africa. You know, I don't get it.
It's a, it's always the easy, it's always the easy stance to take, to look at the rest of the world and say, wow, something's going on out there. And we, we should really condemn it. Meanwhile, we're over here and we are, uh, fighting over the ashes of what used to be a really good idea. And I, um, I, I mean, I, I remember back in 2014 or 15 or something like that. And I, um, I was thinking about, um, it was, I think it was around the time that they were taking the, the Confederate flag off of the, the, the state Capitol building of South Carolina, something like that. It was another, another, uh, uh, another round of Confederate flag and Confederacy nonsense that was going on where everybody wanted to dig up old Confederate generals and exhume them and take down statues. You know, this happens in waves. And we were going, we were like, uh, hunting the ghosts of the Confederacy over here in the US because of slavery, this and slavery, that. And at the same time, the Obama administration, they were going through the negotiation process of one of those big global trade deals. I forget what the hell it was at the time. And, um, and, and they had, they were carving out special, uh, human slavery exceptions for Malaysia to be able to use the trade routes out there near Malaysia. Uh, they understood that, that human slavery was a, a thing that's still there culturally. And, uh, and they wanted to be able to, uh, to, to keep Malaysia involved in this global trade agreement to be able to, um, you know, use their waterways and all that and almost create sunset clauses to help them mitigate this slavery issue that they have. So we don't care about slavery. Um, you know, that, that, I mean, you had, uh, Joe Biden talk about, talk about slavery and, and, uh, and things like that going on in China as a cultural issue. You know, we're different cultures. That was, uh, that was back in two, 2020. Another thing that he was able to say and get away with. So as far as what we beat ourselves up over, over here, what we're willing to burn down, um, our culture and cities and, and our, our social, our social cohesion over here, we're willing to, to light everything ablaze. And meanwhile, when we look into the rest of the world, uh, we will go and we will turn a blind eye to all the things that we supposedly want to eradicate so badly or vice versa in the Ted Cruz situation. So, um, yeah, never look for consistency from politicians, especially over here in America.
Yeah. And I think the hypocrisy is exactly that. Like, you know, if we can't even keep our own freedom and liberty, especially after 2020, the illusion of freedom in America is gone. We were leading the country in some of the least free places for unvaccinated to travel to. I mean, we were in like the top one percentile of awful liberty countries, thanks to the Biden administration. So you know, that illusion is kind of gone. I wish we could focus on ourselves. You even have Marjorie Taylor Greene and Dan Crenshaw trying to pass some sort of bill to invade Mexico to fight the cartel as a terrorist group, as if the cartels don't run the cities and keep them afloat. Like it's not a pretty system, but that's how Mexico runs. It's not our business. How, how in the world is Marjorie Taylor Greene and Dan Crenshaw? And even Trump's talking about it. They're going to, and they're going to fight the cartels, but they can't even stop the gangs in New York City and Chicago. You know, clean up your own country before you go around the world, fighting everyone else over this stuff. And like, you listen to Nikki Haley on like CNN and she's like, we gotta, you know, preserve freedom in Ukraine. I didn't hear your big mouth or little mouth during COVID. I, I don't remember her leadership, fighting for our liberties. So the illusion that these Republicans or Democrats care about democracy or freedom in other countries is so obviously disprovable at this point. And when it comes to the rainbow agenda, it's not popular in Mexico or South America like it is in the West. It's not popular in Islamic countries. It's not popular in Africa. And I think the intersectional delusion will eventually, they'll figure that out because it's just not going to work that way. And a lot of these cultures are way less quick to budge. And to be honest, a lot of Americans are waking up too, because they've pushed too far. And I want to say this too. I saw Ian Miles Chong say on Twitter to Matt Walsh, my only problem with your documentary is it like wasn't extreme enough. And Matt Walsh countered and he's like, the whole reason I did what is a woman the way I did was because I didn't want to be extreme. I didn't want to give my opinion. I just wanted to show people. And honestly, I've had multiple Democrats, uh, share and text me that documentary, which means it's getting through to the left also. And the reason it's getting through to the left is because you're not being annoying. You're not like yelling. You're not just like having an attitude. You're just showing what they're saying. And it's bizarre for any sane person on the left or the right to watch a teacher not be able to explain what a woman is and just like not even be able to say anything. So really to me, that's the best strategy is lead with the truth, but you don't have to be annoying and cringe. This is a massive winnable topic for conservatives. The left has gone way, way too far. And even a lot of left-wingers identify that. This is not what they asked for in 2008. And this, it, it's funny because it's like one of those things that only Republicans can lose this with their attitudes and how they present it. So I really feel like this is a massive culture battle, culture battle that can be won. But it has to be won, you know, tastefully and honestly, because the sloppier you are, you just kind of squander the narrative to the left.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's, they are only in a position right now, the, the, the Bolsheviks on the left, they are only in a position at this point where it's, um, it's all out war. They have to go to that, especially when it comes to LGBT Incorporated. And, um, and you start talking about the gender bending and all that other stuff. It, uh, they can only do things now in a more and more violent way, because I think that their popularity has peaked a long time ago. I, I, people are seeing the madness for what it is, whether you vote one way or another, it doesn't matter. You see the effect that this kind of social malaise has on children, the depression, the anxiety, the identity issues, the fact that they are will, and then of course, to see this, this coordination between psychiatrists, school psychologists, the teachers and how crazy they are. If you can thank anything, uh, thank God for anything when it comes to COVID, it's a look into the insane, the insane people who run schools and who, and run these, these, uh, these classrooms. And then on top of that, you have the pediatrics and every, I mean, everything is in that is in the what is a woman? Documentary and it's, it's very well put together, how there is an all-out push to really, really confuse people in, in, uh, in really damaging ways. And you know that, uh, the most impressionable of, uh, of us all are the, are the children, but you know that there are desperate parents who want to make sense of this, who don't want to alienate themselves from their kids. But at the same time, everybody, their children are being turned against the parents. The parents are being turned against reality. So if you want to hold on to anything that's left of your kids, you have to ingratiate them, it, it seems. And you have to be able to support and reinforce this, this delusion that has been assigned to them by people who have degrees and white coats and all that stuff. It, I think a lot of people are going to be able to see this, um, and say something a lot easier in the, in the months and the years to come, because there is, there's nothing masking the madness anymore. And I, I'm glad, I'm glad for that.
With this specific story, the reason that they were protesting, the Muslim parents were because they removed opt-out option from human sexuality-related material. So even these Muslim parents were not asking for that much. They were allowing all this stuff to go on. But then I guess the liberal parents in school board took away their option to opt out of sexual related material. They just want their choice to opt their kids out and the liberals that run the schools don't even want to let them do that. That's insane. A lot of people are going to start protesting. I saw Armenians fighting with like Antifa or something. I don't know if it was Glendale or, you know, things are getting weird. I do think that like 99.9% of both sides are non-violent. I don't think people like the average person is going to freak out. They're just going to yell at each other. But, uh, you know, unfortunately, when people protest and start screaming at each other, little things happen at, at events like this. And you know, there are some psychos in general on, on both sides. That's just part of life. I want to go, I want to go over this, uh, Google, uh, or no, I'm sorry. It's Apple. This is the Apple goggles. I'm just going to play two seconds of it. It's over $3,000 and I want to get your take on it. I'm going to weigh in on after, but here's what it looks like briefly, folks. So you put on those goggles and it's basically.
Was that two seconds?
Yeah, maybe a second. I don't, I don't feel like Apple copyright striking me and taking all my stuff. So it's just like, whatever. But so those. So it's just like, whatever. But so those goggles, I could show you more, but it's basically like you could click. You can walk around and you're on your cell phone, you're on a computer, but it's in your eyes. I have to say this because I think this is going to be unpopular, but true. A lot of people are saying this is stupid, you know, how that you're dumb if I'm going to laugh at you if you put this on. But I predicted that this would be the next step in cell phones because it's the logical step. It's not as much as I don't want to put something on my eyes like that and it looks stupid. This is not logical. The cell phone, I'm six, three, and I'm carrying around a little rectangle and staring at it 10, 12 hours a day, working on it. That's not optimal. My hands are not meant to just hold a cell phone all the time. My neck's not meant to sit like this. People are having bad posture, their, their fingers hurt, their neck hurts. Cause humans are not made to look at a cell phone. I'm not saying they're made to wear goggles and walk around in virtual reality. But I knew that the next successful cell phone was going to be if they could somehow put it in people's vision, like goggles or glasses. Cause that just makes sense. And I think to put the pros of it before the obvious cons, the pros are you could walk around, you could do stuff. They're showing someone playing with their kids while doing it. As crazy as it seems, as stupid as it seems, as unbelievable as it seems, why would you just sit on your phone on a couch? When you could now do the same thing you're doing on your phone, it's not chipped in your head like Neuralink, thank God yet with this one. But it's, you can actually stretch, work out, you know, do this, go like this, move your body while you're doing the same things and actually get healthier while you're doing it. Uh, it could backfire like Nintendo Wii. I don't know if that's a huge backfire, but it didn't blow up like they thought it would because it was interactive. Some people don't like it. You know, I'm not a fan of over computerizing life, but that's how it is. And that's my unpopular opinion that it is the next logical step in cell phones and cell phones, they're not meant to last forever because we, it's too small. You know, it's too small and it's too illogical to how the human body works.
Well, I think, yeah, well, I, I don't think that it's a, something that needs to be a popular or unpopular opinion. It's just, you know, you look at the, the trajectory of what's being, of what is being, um, developed for people. And, and yeah, uh, the Pokemon Go was the, the thing that should have told everybody what was coming when it comes to augmented reality. So eventually there was going to be a way to look through life in a hyper realistic way and have a, um, I don't know, have a footnote, a clickable footnote attached to everything that you look at, that to be able to, uh, look at a SKU number and just order it right from your Google, uh, glasses or whatever the hell is going on. Uh, it, it's been tried a lot and it's, they're not going to stop because like you said, the next step is inside the skull. So, um, yeah, it's a, it's, it's just one of those things where you could have predicted. And yeah, the, the, the whole idea right now is that we have the, the portals in our palms at the, at the moment. But, um, we, we need to be able to, uh, to, to get away from that eventually. When you think about, would you just think about how the, the river is flowing? It's all bad. I think it's, I think it's all bad as far as humanity as a whole. I don't think that we were, we were built for this kind of exposure and this kind of, uh, this integration, this cybernetic integration. I think it's going to do some major damage because it already has, um, with the, with the, the more primitive iterations of this that we're using right now. So we'll see, we'll see the, the, they always talk about the, the, everybody likes to dunk on Zuckerberg for all of the, the metaverse, uh, failures as of now. That's one of those things where I never look at those, you know, the unpopulated digital worlds that he's launched. I never look at that as a loss because you look at the World Economic Forum and what they say, where humanity is going and what technologies are going to be necessary to go into the future with a dominant hand on the steering wheel for all humanity. This is the technology that they're talking about. So if it doesn't work in one, in one version, it'll work in the next, or it'll be forced into being in the next.
I wonder if Facebook and Zuckerberg has this technology. Cause you know, from an unbiased perspective of like Apple, uh, Facebook, whatever. Apple got the edge in my opinion because Meta Quest or whatever they're calling it now, the Quest, it was Oculus. They bought that. It's cool. I've played it years ago before Facebook bought it. You put it on your, you put it on goggles, you can't see in the real world, you can only see in the goggles and you could play things in that world. It's super dope. It's very fun to play at a friend's house, but I only did it at a friend's house. It wasn't like I wanted it really bad. I'm not really into gaming, but it's cool. Where Apple, I think that got the better end of them is they were thinking what I was thinking. I, you know, Elon said the same thing a couple of years ago, but he's like just sitting on a couch with goggles. Like it's not really going to take off the way you think it is. But what will possibly take off is making it so you can actually see in the real world. But you can also use what you can on the cell phone while clicking it. To me, I'm glad it's not in the brain. I'm glad it's not this. You know, I'm, I'm interested. I'm not going to wear it outside. I'm not going to be the first one to get it. I kind of just want to see how it works. But I don't necessarily think this is a terrible idea because I do think like, I'm, I love looking at mountains and stuff. Like I, I don't want to be staring at my phone for the rest of my life. This is such a small rectangle. I, I don't want to stare at a rectangle my whole life. That's, it's a sad existence that we're all living. The goggles, I think it's the next step. And I'm not saying that to shill for Apple or anything. I just, I literally was like, oh, that's what I, I said that like a year ago. I'm like, this is going to be the next thing. I don't know who's making it or who's trying to, but they're, I, they probably have smarter teams and way more technology than I do. So if I could think it, they've already thought it, it's here. That's it. You could see, you could play with your kids, you can go out. But instead of staring at a rectangle, you have a computer that you can interact with and stretch, et cetera. I think it's going to do well over time, honestly. I'm, I'm going to be early on the, I think this is, this is way better than what Facebook came up with.
Well, uh, I, I, I think about that and I say, hey, well, if I had one of these things that I can put on my head and, uh, if I'm home and I say, all right, well, or I have to do a few things, I'm going to, I'm going to do some email or whatever. And, uh, I'm just going to do it laying down or whatever. I'm going to put this thing on my head, whatever. But if I want to play with my child or if I'm going to go out and look at a mountain, or if I want to do anything that has nothing to do, I'm not going to integrate work. And I think the whole idea of, well, I've got it on here. So now I can, I can do all these life experiences and also, uh, post to Instagram at the same time. I, I don't know, there's something about that where just enjoy the mountain, take the damn thing off. If, if you're home and you're sitting around and you don't want to be craning your head into your lap because you're, you're checking your newsreels and all that stuff. And you want to put this Oculus on or whatever. I say, okay, well, like God bless and, and that would be, that'd be a good way to save your neck at least. But, uh, I don't know, having people walking around with that thing on while they're holding their children is going to be really dystopian to me.
Right. But think about this. I mean, when I walk, when I used to go to New York, uh, you'd look around and everyone's like in the moment. The last time I went, I'll never forget it. Everyone was on their phones and it was dystopian because everyone, nobody can even walk five steps. And I'm guilty of that sometimes too. So what you're saying is what I do. When I do nature stuff, I try to stay off my phone. I try to go on walks without it. I try to, like, my favorite times are just leaving it away. Cause even when you have it on a walk, you're thinking about it. So I do that constantly now. And I think with the, the goggles, it's going to be the same thing. There's going to be some people that overindulge and some people who don't. But do you at least see like, say you're going to work seven hours on the computer at your house and you're on the phone or thing? Where that could be the new thing, kind of like how the iPad came out. And it's like, well, it's smaller than a computer. It's bigger than a cell phone, but it's healthier to look at an iPad probably than like a tiny screen. So it's a, like, I see the use of it. I'm not someone that says like, don't be in the real world anymore. But I think it's going to take off. I think it's, I think it's kind of like my standup desk, like this desk goes up and down, you know? So, so it's good for my posture. Um, I, I, I see this working and some people are going to overindulge and others are just going to use it the same way they use a computer and cell phone just to have better posture and like have more interaction.
Well, we'll see, we'll see, we'll see the, once people start walking around with them on. I remember when the, the Google Glass came out and that went nowhere. But obviously, you know, there's always, there's always the first attempts and then things just get, go upward from there. And this is a major release for Apple. That's, that's a, that's a certain, so well, I'll, I'll be on the lookout to see the first person walking down the street with the goggles on.
It's definitely like creepy just to think about. Someone said, this isn't the life I want for my kids. It's true, but also you don't want your kids staring at the cell phone. The kids are already a mess between the forced masking and the cell phones. They're a mess already. You know, it's not like this is going to be the problem. It could be worse. It could be slightly better. Um, but the problem is already here. You know, I could see it backfiring. I could see it really screwing with you if now you're having like real vision. But it just kind of begs the weird question of like, is it better to stare at a rectangle for 10 hours? Or is it better to stare through goggles? So you know, like what's healthier?
Think it's better to have self-control and being able to compartmentalize your life and have balance. And, um, um, uh, you know, uh, like I said, if, if there, if you have a neck issue or something like that, where the time that you've designated for work at home, you want to be able to work through these goggles, so that whatever, then that's fine. But as far as, uh, whether you're holding up the phone or on the computer or anything else, you got to find balance in your life. It's like taking a diet pill, uh, over, you know, really, uh, getting yourself into a good exercise and, and, uh, some dietary guidelines that work for you. And you, you have to, we all have to take control because there's going to be more and more crutches that come out that make things easier. But what are we getting from all the ease that is, uh, that is coming our way from all the time that we're saving? How are we using all that spare time that's being created? I feel like we got less time with all the gadgets that are supposed to make things easier. We got less and more time for ourselves. So where's all that time going? It's in the gadgets.
They're, they're consuming us. I agree. Balance is important. I'm just wondering if the balance of, of the goggles is going to take over the balance of the cell phone and eventually kind of cut into that market. But yeah, the, the gadgets are consuming us. It's driving people crazy. It's a beautiful thing, but it's also hard to disconnect from. I, I hear you on all that. I think balance is, is the answer. And it's, it's going to get more and more difficult to like get away from the cell phone. It's sad, but you know, it is the world we live in. There's pros and cons and self-discipline is all we could really do. Last thing real quick, especially since you're in the smoke, there are, uh, there is some sort of Canadian forest burning. And I haven't fully looked into what they're saying it is and, you know, made my own decision. So I have no idea like what, you know, how rough is it and what, what do you like suspect? I don't know.
I mean, it really sucks right now. Uh, I don't know if you can really, you can really see, but there is, I mean, outside is like I'm saying, it's very, the, the smoke. It feels like you have a, a couple of neighbors that have been burning stuff in their backyard the entire time. And this is coming from hundreds of miles away, hundreds. And, um, I don't know what I'm, what I'm, what I feel about the whole thing. But you know, I had already had a couple of friends of mine from Brooklyn get in touch with me and say, hey, you think that this is a, a test run for climate lockdowns? Because they're telling people to stay inside. And to be honest, there, there's a real reason that you should be staying inside right now. If you live anywhere in the, the swath that I'm in. It's, uh, it's irritating to the throat, to the eyes, um, they, it's, it sucks. It really does. But, um, uh, you know, the Nova Scotia fires, I don't know what the hell started it. If it's some Smokey the Bear situation with a cigarette or something else. But this is the first time I remember any of this. And, and you know, I remember back, I know if you're from California, you probably remember that you probably know this more than, than most people because you have a very, very, uh, intense fire season. But I remember the, not too long ago, I think it was 2019 or 2020, where we saw that the sky went red somewhere in Nevada or I, God knows where it was on, you know, on the receiving end of all of these, these, uh, westward to eastward winds with, um, you know, carrying a, carrying all the exhaust from a forest fire out there. I'm seeing that over here when I woke up yesterday morning and I saw a little pink and orange square of light on my bedroom floor. I said, what the hell is that? That's the sun? And I didn't know what was going on at the time. And I, I looked outside and there's like this pink weird sun going on. And that's when all the news started getting around all my friends. Hey, you know, you see what's going on here? It's mostly from the fires. So, um, they said it'll be all cleared up in about a day or two. It's going to be real bad on, on Friday, they say. And then hopefully by the weekend, it all goes away. But shit, man, I mean, I don't want any more of this.
Yeah. Wind and rain definitely helps, but sometimes wind can be the opposite and hurt. I have to say, uh, it's happened to me before and I took precaution. I tried to stay inside. I even bought a gas mask. I don't know if it worked before the masking was around. I had a little gas mask that no one was wearing, but it looks really, really rough. I would say, you know, I'm not a doctor by any means, but try to stay inside folks and, and really take precaution if you can these next two days. Cause it looks like, no joke, it looks like Beijing out there. And, uh, yeah, I don't want anyone to, to be breathing that in any more than you have to.
Yeah, indeed. I'd say stay inside too. I'm, I'm keeping my daughter inside. At least until all this is, uh, going on and the, the little air filters are, are going to. So hopefully that mitigates a little something.
Thanks for joining today on this episode of Dream Rare Podcast. Where can people find you Frank and, and check your stuff?
Quitefrankly.tv. I mean, everything you need to know about the show is right there. And I'm live Monday through Friday evenings at 7:00 PM. I'm still on YouTube. I'm on the rumble. You can watch right on quitefrankly.tv. So 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday, quitefrankly.tv. Thank you so much for the invitation, man. I always love having you on my show.
Yeah, I was going to say, thanks for always having me on and I really enjoyed the discussion, enjoy your perspective and I'm glad we had it. I just gotta hit this real quick and, uh, yeah, definitely we'll do it again. And over the next year, we'll see how, we'll see how things play out and we'll try to, you know, find another time where it's, it's dope to talk. But thanks for being open and just honest. Cause I think a lot of people feel a lot of ways in this country. And I know me and you can have that chat without getting like emotional or upset, which a lot of people can't, you know? So I think it's, I think it's dope. Um, I knew that you'd be easy to talk to. Some people I want to debate or have a conversation with, but I'm like, I don't know if they're, you know, they seem, they seem upset. Maybe they need to get some Apple goggles and go for a walk. I'm just joking. And for people in the comments, I'm not like overly promoting Apple. It's not a company I work with or anything. I just, as someone, I'm like, I, I think it's disastrous where technology is going. But I really thought that this was the next step. And I'm like, you know, if they could take the phone out of people's hands, it's kind of like the cell phone. You know, it's like, oh no, there's a house phone, a cell phone's weird. They thought the internet was weird. Uh, this could fail. It might fail. I'm just being honest where I'm like, I could see this being the one to kind of start to edge into society just because of the pragmatism of it, despite all the obvious cons and like creepiness of it. But we'll see, either I'll look good in a year, two years or I'll look like an idiot. So I, I'll, I'll take that risk. That's just my thought. I don't care that much about it though.
You might be, you'll, you'll, you're going to be on the beach, watching the waves come in with your, uh, with your, your, your goggles on under a, uh, President DeSantis.
Dude.
You're going to have everything you want right there.
That sounds terrible, bro. Yeah, I got my Google goggles, I, you know, with, with the President DeSantis. Now I'm not, I'm not taking these to the beach. There's no way. Beach is my no phone time anyway, but we'll see. I'm, uh, I'm, I'm throwing myself out there saying that I think this is going to catch on. We'll see if it ages well or not. Appreciate you. Check out his, his link that he talked about and folks, this has been Dream Rare Podcast. Thanks for being here. Thanks for hanging out. Thanks for checking out my links and all that stuff. You are very appreciated. Hey, what's going on my friends? Just a few ways to stay in touch and support if you'd like to. The first way is dreamrare.com. We have blue beanies, black beanies, pink hats, other colored hats, freedom versus tyranny shirts. Stay blessed, long sleeve, God is great, long sleeve and lots of more cool items coming soon. Dreamrare.com. Check out the shop to support. Everything's made in the United States, handpicked by me. Patreon.com/raretalk for $5 a month. You can help support me, support the show. If you haven't noticed, unlike other channels, I don't work with very many sponsors, sometimes none at all. And part of the way I'm able to do that is with the dreamrare.com shop and patreon.com/raretalk. So thank you guys for keeping this show free, unimpeded, uninterrupted. I'm forever grateful. My free email list is stayintouchwithme.com. So check the links below in the description or just type in on any browser, stayintouchwithme.com, all one word. You'll find my email list, put it in there and it's the least annoying email list you'll ever be on. I barely use it because I don't like getting emailed every day or every week. It's annoying, so I don't do it. Stayin touch with me.com. It helps me take back some power away from big tech. Telegram, t.me/dreamrarechat or at dreamrarechat. Due to censorship, I post all my live streaming videos there. Sometimes I have some bonus content and I try to give people a heads up when Facebook or YouTube won't. Dreamrarechat at Telegram. My Instagram is at dreamrare. Thanks for everybody following there for shorter content. And dreamrarelinks.com, that's dreamrarelinks.com has all my stuff. My podcast on Spotify, Apple podcasts, my music on Spotify and Apple, my rumble page, my bit shoot and gab page. All my links are found at dreamrarelinks.com. Thanks for watching folks. God bless you.